But you never know when you're gonna get that. It could be totally random and he's just there for it. And you're like, okay, well, I guess that's what we're doing today.
It is 1:00 PM. Time for a regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, yes, thank you. It is Commissioner Cessna's turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have provided us. We ask for your guidance and grant us wisdom during our meeting to move our community forward in a positive direction. Be with all of our citizens today in our community, but especially be with our first responders as they're keeping our community safe and at peace. We ask for your grace and we thank you for your continued blessings for our community. And as we pray, amen.
Okay, next up is approval of the October 18th Commission meeting minutes. And is there any changes to that?
I look good.
All right, those will stand as approved. Next, we have public comment. This is a time, if you are not on the agenda, to come up and talk about whatever topics you have. We have set aside 30 minutes, and if you do come up, please state your name for anybody who's... All right, come on up.
My name is Brock Hendrick.
Okay, thank you.
To the community of Garden City, my name is Brock Hendrick, and I have been a resident of Garden City for six years. I am currently employed by Nutrien Act Solutions. My wife Kayla has been employed through USD 457 School District for the past 12 years and currently teaches second grade at Jenny Wilson Elementary School. The reason that I come here today is to voice my concern and demand for the shortage of daycare in Garden City. Currently, Garden City has a community daycare that is temporarily closed, but to be frank, is batting through its last tidal wave before it is set to sink. The daycare board has had an emergency meeting last Friday, October 28th, and chose to close for a week, with intentions of possibly closing within three to five months. Without your help, our beloved Community Daycare Center would be closed permanently in the not-so-distant future. I will try to bring you all up to speed as quickly as I can. We've been struggling in multiple areas within the Community Daycare for quite some time now. After diving into the financial statements, it was brought to my attention that the rates for the Community Daycare Center should have been raised three years ago to $165 a week, but the board at that time chose not to do so. We have been operating in the red for extended length of time now, and the only reason that we haven't already closed is because we're using the government's PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program funds, that was originally supposed to use as a loan through COVID relief, but later chose to be forgiven. A few months ago, the funds were in the six figures, but vastly dwindling. Hence where the three to five months comes from. Last Friday, parents were sent a message stating that the Community Daycare Center would be shutting down at noon, giving an hour and a half's notice for parents to make arrangements and pick up. To our understanding, it closed because they were unable to staff the daycare full enough for our children to be safe. A few months ago, the starting wage for a worker at a Community Daycare Center was $7.75 an hour. Our new board raised the rates from $7.75 an hour to $9.00 an hour. Even with the increase of rates, it is very hard to find somebody to work for $9.00 an hour, when the majority of fast food chains are starting their wages at or around $13.00 an hour. Once we find the employees, the next hurdle is keeping them long-term. Over the past few months, there have been many changes. A few of those changes are seven new parents/community members got on the board to make a change for the betterment of the daycare. Several other parents took it upon themselves to devote countless hours, doing their time, money, resources, to try and help in any way that they could. One newly selected member has taken it upon herself to stay in constant communication with KDHE, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and others have even gone as far as writing grants to help purchase a curriculum and supplies needed for the education of all children in attendance at the Community Daycare Center. I have recently been made aware that the Community Daycare Center has not been teaching a curriculum for the past five years. This is a huge concern to me and my wife, as my daughter is four years old and we've asked multiple times what the curriculum is being used. According to an article I read online, the average cost of living has increased to 13% in the last year. Not to mention, other areas of life such as gas, electricity, and food causes immediate strain on some households. This leads me into my next most recent concern connected with Community Daycare Center. Earlier this month, the new board voted eight to two to immediately increase the...to $190 a week regardless of age, beginning January 1 of 2023. They felt this was needed in order to sustain the funds to keep from operating in the red. From my understanding, that is still questionable if the rates are even enough to sustain the center. The $190 rate is the second increase in rates since August. With that said, if we are raised to $190 a week, there are many families, including my own, who currently attend Community Daycare Center that may not be able to work in with their monthly budget. Although it's understood that something needs to be done, raising rates due to inflation is not what's best for the community members at the service centers. In my opinion, there are many families who are going to have to make that hard decision. Do I send my kids to be Community Daycare? Do I quit my job to look after my kids because my paycheck is at or less the daycare expenses? Or do my family go without? I believe in my heart that if those of you sitting before me have not yet seen an economical impact due to daycare shortage, I'm afraid it is coming very soon unless we get the help and guidance of those within the community. According to our last record, there are 54 businesses within the community that have at least one employee whose child attends Community Daycare Center. In addition, the second-largest employer in the county is the school district, is already short 40-plus teachers in the school year this year, and the closure of the daycare alone could impact that number greatly. In closing, I'm seeking your immediate help in creating a safe, yet affordable, learning environment for our children and families within the community. The solution that I propose is that we team up with the City of Garden City, Garden City Community College, and the County Commissioners to invest in our children. The strength in the ideas brought forth by each entity can get Community Daycare Center back on the right track in serving those within the very community we call home. I would like to ask you all a question before I go any further. What are you doing as board members to help not pass on the cost onto the parents?
The cost of early childhood education?
That's correct. The cost of being able to help out.
Well, one thing that we have done as a board was to give a significant amount of money to the Early Trinity, what is it, Finney County Childhood Early Learning Network, FCEELN, and that is a group that is working to come to some conclusions on this because even though we are short daycare slots, like you say, here, we have 54 businesses. KCSEL right now says that we're short 2,000 slots, not just the 50 that we're going to be short here. So part of the money that we put to that is to start a group that can actually start to address these, not just at a single-site issue, but kind of community-wide, and work on a model that can be both good for the employees, so that, like you're talking about the cost of employment here, try to get that number up to have good employees, but then also work on a model that will make it sustainable for our community so that we can have long-term solutions, like you're lining out here, where we have a...kind of have a problem where we have not paying enough money for the employees, but then you also have a very expensive situation and that's not sustainable long-term. So as a board, we did invest in that solution, and I believe that those things are going to be coming online fairly soon. So that's one thing that we have done.
Thank you for answering that. To finish my letter, the current most-impact needs are time, money, and support, which all we are running short of. In the near future, I would love to follow up with all of you and come up with a more concrete solution for the betterment of everyone impacted by Community Daycare. I am a believer that our children are our future, and I stand before you today to fight for my family and my three daughters, who currently attend Community Daycare, as well as all those that are unable to attend or advocate at the current time. Lastly, I'd like to leave with the quote that has truly spoken me as of lately. "On a team, it's not the strength of the individual players, but it's the strength of the unit and how they all function together." Bill Belichick, sincerely Brock Hendrick. And lastly, or one other thing, I would like to invite all of you, I invite all of you guys, if you guys are...would be willing to, to attend the daycare meeting this November 3rd at 7:00 PM at the daycare. After the temporary closure this week, the board plans to review and determine the long-term plans for our center, which your support is greatly appreciated. So I thank you for taking my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up and taking the time to discuss this, and this is a very serious issue, and thank you for putting effort into this. And I guess let's...I'll get with you, or I'll have Ceylan get with you. Actually, I have your email right here.
And I have my business card.
Yep, I got it right here.
And on the letter alone is my...
I'll give you an email and we can follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Have a dialogue.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I was originally coming to this meeting because I'm here with GCEA and my education and early childhood pathway students to celebrate National Education Week. So I was already planning on coming here. I have five of my students that were able to take time out of their schedule and come and do this and experience, you know, local government and community at its best and all this. And it just happened to be super fortuitous that also I am here now because I have been working with Community Daycare. So I am the Executive Director of Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network. We founded it, I don't remember how many years ago, several years ago, and we founded it to bring the community together, to help solve problems with childcare, and to work with the always continuing problems of childcare, and to help with sustainability, and to help with the problem that the mayor was saying about parents can't pay more and teachers can't make less, which is a nationwide problem. Just for some history, the network was created, like I said, to be a community collaboration, to be able to find solutions. You all have a member, Derek serves on it right now, and Matt has served on it in the past, and we're very grateful for their input and their support. And we have a spot for a representative from the county, we have economic development, we have several local industries represented, Head Start... Community College, yes, thank you, and the school district. So we have the big players, people that are in a position to make big moves. And so I'm actually, it's weird because I'm in a lot of different roles, I am here as myself right now. I'm not here as Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network. When Jennifer Cunningham contacted me about Community Daycare closing, I was asked to help, and I'm helping. I have a master's degree in early childhood education, I've run a center before, I've got a home daycare, I've been an adult educator and facilitator for early childhood, so this is sort of my jam, this is what I do, and I joke, but it's true, this is my hobby, this is what I do in my spare time. So what I wanted to say is that, let's see...oh, so my thing, from the beginning, I moved back here with helping childcare in mind, if I was able to, however I could do it. I'm in a position now where I'm teaching high school students to go into the early childhood industry. They graduate with the ability to be a lead teacher in a classroom, or shortly, if they need a couple more observation hours, but, and able to be parents in the school district. So that's one way that I've been able to generate some actual change for that. Right now, Community Daycare, who's lost a bunch of employees, there's four of my former students at least that are working there right now, that have come on since sort of the crisis happened, to help out. And they're either here right now, or there right now, working. I was able to, thank goodness, the school district said, yes, please do whatever you can to help. I was able to take professional days off, so I've taken today and tomorrow off to help them. I've been there all day. I was there last night, literally woke up dreaming about what to do, and handing out binders, binders and stuff. But what I want to say is that I really think we have a good local solution. And I'm saying that as me, and also as Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, and also as a person who's working at the high school, and also as a person who is on the Advisory Council Board for the Community College. Like, we have a solution. I wish that we could have implemented it before there was a crisis. Thanks to you guys' generosity, we were able to purchase, you guys in the county, we were able to purchase the Third Street Building. We have it, we have possession of it. These ladies and some others helped us move our $90,000 grant worth of stuff into it. It's not set up yet, but we're ready to license that again. Everything is happening right now. This is go time, and I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for what you did. Derek had the city employees, the Parks and Rec people come and help us move in also. Everybody's been so supportive, and I know that it's been nerve-wracking, and people have been burned in early childhood in this community in the past, and it's tumultuous, and it's kind of mysterious, and it just doesn't make sense, but there are some people now around that get it, and we have solutions in place for some of the things that you brought up. Our model has $1,250 an hour for part-time, $40,000 for lead teachers that have the qualifications, and it costs $190. And that's what it costs right now, and that's what we'll charge right now, because we have to be sustainable. You guys and the other people that are on FCEELN and other important people in the community, now, this is the time. We have it, we need help figuring out how to make it not as expensive for parents. The childcare centers cannot charge any less. This is what we have to charge to sustain, but if the employers in the community can do something to help their employees reduce the cost, if local organizations want to provide scholarships for parents, we need the community to help us sustain this and support the parents. We'll make a sustainable system, all work, employed or not, or volunteer or whatever, all work to make this happen with all the awesome people that I've collected, but this is the time just to be thinking about what is the actual thing that we're going to do now? You know, what is the actual concrete thing that we're going to do? What's the systemic thing that you as a city can do to help in this effort? And what are creative ways that we can move forward to make it work? So I had other things to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Anybody else from the public? Well, it's Donna.
My name is Donna Gerstner, and I'm with Livewell Finney County, and I'm here to let you know of a coming exhibit in our community. The vaping display from the Kaufman Museum is going to be here November the 8th through the 17th. It will be housed at the Garden City High School. It is free to the public, and it will be open to the community from 3:30 to 7:00 PM, and we would welcome you all to come see this awesome display. It's a great option for teaching kids about vaping if they don't have any information on that, a parent and a child to go together and see that. And also, we will be having the Truth Initiative coming to town, speaking to all of the Garden City and Holcomb high schoolers and middle schoolers. They will be here November the 16th through the 18th, so every high school student in Finney County and every middle school student in Finney County will get to listen to the Truth Initiative, which is a national organization out of Washington DC that advocates for tobacco policy and educating folks about vaping and such. So just to let you know what's happening in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Callie Dyer with Livewell Finney County, but today I am here also on behalf of Garden City Community College to invite you all out for the ribbon-cutting on Friday at noon for the outdoor fitness court with Garden City Community College, so you guys can kind of see what's going to happen at Southeast Park as well. And this is being brought to the community, Garden City Community College, with a grant for the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we can also with great partnerships with Acela Care and Dig construction. So I'd like to see you all out there at noon. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Successful public comment, I think.
Ready to move on, Mayor?
Yes.
To item 6A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the week of November 14th through 18th as American Education Week in Garden City, Kansas.
I've moved to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. That passes. And do we have a representative to talk about the American Education Week?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you. I'm not sure how much I'd be welcome to say. Mr. Cessna's been trying to coach me along his bench.
Did he tell you a 40-minute speech?
Forty minutes? Oh, good. Phil, you can do it all. No, this is a positive thing. I appreciate that recognition. Our association believes that formal education is a cornerstone of a successful, well-lived life, and so there are other cornerstones too, but it's pretty pivotal and definitely affects long-term employment and earnings and those kinds of things. So we appreciate this formal recognition from our commission very much. And if I may, I'd just like to take a moment and introduce my Vice President, Ronnie Knight, and I'm Ron Wyden, I didn't say him right. And our Secretary, Mark Russo. Jeanette Turpin is also a member, you've already heard from her today, but I really wanted to say, you know, we've got some kids here today that are crazy enough to want to be educators, and I'm so thankful for that. So our education rising kiddos today. So just to appreciate your indulgence, and I appreciate your proclamation.
All right, thank you.
I'm nowhere near 40 minutes.
Do you want me to read this here or at an event at the school?
Mr. Cessna, I'm going to ask for your advice on that.
We normally have the mayor come and kick off the week on Monday at an event. I'll get with you and Mr. Wyden to coordinate that.
Okay, we'll do that. I'll read it there. And do you still want a picture, since you have...
I would say get a picture with them while they're all here.
I follow their lead, they're shaking their head yeah. That's what happens when you deal with a new president.
There you go. No, you're good.
All right. Who's got the camera? Oh, all right. Oh, now hold it. You've got kids in here, you got to be seeing. All right.
On three, everyone smile. One, two, three. I just need to make sure everyone's eyes are open.
Please, I need to take a picture.
You can keep that. Well, actually, I need to read it. I'll get it to you on Monday.
There you go.
Mayor, item 6B is another proclamation. This one's at the request of folks that promote Extra Mile Day, and your governing body is being asked to allow the mayor to proclaim November 1st as Extra Mile Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I move that we allow the mayor to proclaim November 1st, 2022, as Extra Mile Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. That passes, and I don't believe anybody is here for this, so we'll just keep on going in for the sake of time.
Item...hang on. I need to get back to the agenda. Okay. Item 7A, congratulations to Kent Podorf, manager of Electrical Services, on the occasion of his recently received Dedicated Service Award from the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. And I would like to invite Mike up here to the podium to speak a little bit more specifically about this award and Kent's qualifications for it.
Absolutely, thank you. It's an honor to be able to be here and do this. The president of KMEA, John Quinde, who's the city manager of the City of Russell, could not be here today, so he asked if I would kind of fill in for him along the way, but I want to know, you know, that last month in October, Kent was recognized by KMEA. KMEA represents 87 municipal electric systems, and Kent was selected by the people of that group. And this is what they said. We provided a little bit of backup information, but so Kent was awarded the Dedicated Commitment to Service Award. He grew up in Holly, Colorado, before venturing to Garden City in 1979. He worked as the electrical department serviceman, responsible for meter installation, service calibrations, and during that time, he enrolled in the apprentice lineman program with the city. He completed all of the necessary instructional bookwork in eight months, and it typically takes 48, to show you some idea of how it brings it. This eventually led Kent to be a journeyman lineman, then the foreman, and now he's the electrical operations manager overseeing all distribution, metering, SCADA, and the generation systems that Garden City has in their electric department. He was essential in the installation and of the implementation in the entire AMI system. That's been 10 years ago. He expanded the city's SCADA electric system, developed the outage reporting map, that's on the city's webpage and currently viewed by several, and most recently acquired the facilities that allowed his city, Garden City, to connect to the bulk transmission system. He is now assisting in the implementation of an entirely new utility billing system. He's a busy man who's respected across the region, not only for his knowledge, but for his dedication to the electric industry and his friendship to many, many people. So it's a privilege to be able to tell you all that about Kent, and Kent's wife, Ann, is here today to celebrate. It's been Kent's love of his life for over 35 years, so. So the award actually says, "The Dedicated Commitment Service Award presented to Kent Podorf in recognition of dedication, outstanding performance, and the desire to serve the City of Garden City and represent public power at its highest level." So thank you. I'll get out of the way. I'll get out of the way.
I like how they all squirmed. Like slowly came around and I'm like, I'm not sure whether to have a picture or hug or I'm not sure.
It was like a big unexpected sports.
It was. Yeah. You have to kneel down if you want it to.
You can't see Sophia.
I'll stand over here, buddy.
Out there, big smiles. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Except for Kent.
Except for Kent.
Except for Kent.
That's what I always tell my lawyers in our firm. I always give their secretaries the day off. I'm like, you can have the day off. Mike Jager, like, you can't just give people days off. They're like, it doesn't work that way. Well, not people who work for me, people who work for the other people in my firm.
Hey, after Friday, you can have the day off.
Just a few days.
Just two days. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not on your hand this time.
That's right.
Item 7B, the governing body has recently received the Kansas Department of Transportation Fall 2022 Cost Share Grant Award in the amount of $1.5 million. So to tell you a little bit more about that, again, Director of Public Works and Utilities, Mike Beer.
Hi, Mike.
All right. Thanks again. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you recall, the governing body in September of 2022 authorized staff to apply for the Fall 2022 Cost Share Program in the amount of $3,655,000. This was the second time we applied for the grant. The first time we were not successful in receiving any grant funding. This time we were, and just kind of, Matt might be able to pull up that picture real quick. The east, this is what this encompasses, and it's the East Side Pedestrian Pathway Sidewalk Expansion Project. So it extends Tally Trail east to Highway 8350 bypass and then east on Spru Street to Jenny Barker Road. It constructs an at-grade pedestrian crosswalk at Highway 50 or the inner bypass in Spru Street. Extends sidewalks north along the east side of Jenny Barker Road from Spru Street to Schulman Avenue. It continues with a new trail along Mary Street from Linwood Drive and west to K-156 in the new Jenny Barker K-156 intersection. It also includes construction of two pedestrian bridges, one over Drainage Ditch 1 from Tally Trail, which is there by Harold Street, and the other one is on Drainage Ditch Number 2 on East Mary Street. The construction grant award is for $1.5 million from KDOT, the most that they'll award for one of these projects. And the city share will be $2.1 million. KDOT will send the city official documentations within the next three to six months, and staff plans to prepare the bids and bid it, assuming you, when that time comes, you agree to do that in the spring of 2024. There were 88 applications requested to KDOT requesting more than $71 million, and only 14 projects were awarded for a total of $11 million. And this is probably one of the most significant pedestrian pathway sidewalk improvements that we've made here in Garden City in quite a few years. So we're pretty excited about it. And you can see all of the red is new, and then the yellow dashed is also new. It connects Southeast Park to the rest of the trail system, actually completes that loop on the east side of town. So we were very pleased with that. I'm more happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just wonder, I mean, you have the 88, you came up against 88 applications. So was there an edge that, was there something you thought there was an edge that, I mean, it was a really well-laid-up plan, I know that, but I'm just, did they indicate any reason why you were chosen or?
No, they don't really elaborate on why one community is selected over another. I think obviously we put together a very good application. It's a second application, so they knew we were dead serious about meeting them. And then also, you know, Adam Sharp from Wilson Engineering, he deserves an awful lot of credit. He put 90% of this together really well. Yeah, they did a pretty good job.
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you.
Item 7C, Public Work Operations Manager Patterson will present the 2022 Fall Cleanup Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So this year's cleanup, it started on September 26th and it ended on October 7th. We had a total of 141 tons that was hauled to the landfill. That equals 2,000 pounds of debris. We had two major changes that improved our fuel and our labor numbers there. One change was operationally in our street department and how we positioned the equipment throughout the neighborhoods. We spread them out and kind of staggered them, and that allowed our employees to know exactly where they needed to be. It proved to be a good change that we made. The second here was mattresses, and this was actually a change at the landfill. In the past, what we would do, we'd pick up the mattresses and haul them to a location. Then at the end of the cleanup, we'd have to go back and pick up those mattresses and take to the landfill. That's no longer needed, so now we can just haul them mattresses straight to the landfill with the other debris. So that was a big improvement on fuel and labor. Overall, it was a successful cleanup and got a lot of debris out of the city. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is one of the things, these cleanups are one of the things that the community really appreciates. I mean, we hear it time and time again, so just thank you for continuing to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D is the report from our annual auction of vehicles and equipment. And if you've got any questions on that, we'll do our best to answer them. E, F, and G are monthly department reports. Meetings of note, it's a long list. If any of those require RSVPs, please do so through C-LIN. And I think with that, we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. And if approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2566-2022A.
I make a motion, we approve appropriation ordinance number 2566-2022A.
Second.
Here's a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution authorizing Kansas Municipal Energy Agency to purchase energy on behalf of the city of Garden City, Kansas. And if approved, this would be resolution number 2969-2022. Mike?
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
This is a lengthy one. I'm just going to kind of read it because there's a lot of numbers in here. But staff asked the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA, to obtain an energy-only resource pricing from different resources for the city of Garden City for the next 10 years. The request was that the city has the option to reduce the amount of energy in three years. And the contractual agreement being offered by KMEA is for a 10-year period, and it's split up into two different timeframes. The first timeframe is a three-year commitment, and the numbers represent five times 16, that means five days a week, 16 hours a day, for 10 megawatts. And the second time, 10-megawatt-hours, the second timeframe is for a seven-year timeframe of 5 megawatts, 16 hours, 5 megawatts of energy-only resources. And then I go on to explain that the 5 by 16, 10, means that the city will receive 10-megawatt-hours of power per hour for 16 hours from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM per day, five days a week. The reason we do that is our load significantly drops off over the weekend and ramps up during those peak hours. And that goes Monday through Friday, the first one for three years. The cost of, the reason we broke that up to only do three years on the first one, then five years, was so we can inject solar power when that comes available in the three-year of when that ends. And the reason we delayed on the solar is because of the costs of the federal grant that's going to reduce some of the costs. We wanted to wait till we could take full advantage of that. But in the meantime, we wanted to make sure that we were prepared for this winter. So the reason to reduce was to allow for other energy resources to come in. The cost of this fixed energy is $48.29 per megawatt-hour. And if approved by the governing body today, it will go into effect on December 1st of 2022. This will reduce the city's exposure to market fluctuations through the 2022-23 winter months and provide the energy needed for the empirical foods plant startup, which will occur next year. Market energy prices are also projected to average around $100 per megawatt-hour from December 22 through April of 2023, and could be much higher due to the high cost of natural gas. The energy prices during the summer months, the summer of 2022, were at times well over $125 a megawatt-hour, just to indicate how high the cost of power is going. And just for reference, the last energy contract that the governing body was asked to approve was in 2021, and that was for $39 a megawatt-hour. And if you remember, we thought that was high at the time. The proposal for you today is a 24% increase over that cost. The Energy Information Administration, the EIA, they published a short-term energy outlook report that cited heightened levels of uncertainty resulting from a variety of factors, including the continuing war between Russia and Ukraine, decisions of OPEC+, the rate of the US, the rate in which the US oil and natural gas producers, having increased their drilling in response to these higher energy prices, along with the drawdown of strategic oil and gas reserves in the United States. The other options explored by KMEA for the city of Garden City included additional Dogwood Energy Center ownership, which is 100% natural gas plant, and different internal generation, which would be diesel. In our case, we already have natural gas. Both projected to be in the $75 to $125 per megawatt-hour cost. And renewable energy was not available for this shorter period of time, and that's because the Southwest Power Pool mandated an increase in your reserve capacity. So it used to be you just had that 12% more than what your load was. They increased that to 15% more, really because of the effects of the winter storm Uri that there wasn't enough generation. They want to ensure that there's enough. So the wind generators, a portion of their energy is used as capacity. So they're just saying, we're not going to sell yet until we know for sure what's going to happen. We'll revisit that in a couple of years. So if approved today, with the city's expected load growth, this resolution locks down the pricing for approximately 10% of the city's annual energy needs and reduce the market exposure from 27% to approximately 16%. And also during that time, we still have the opportunity to leverage and take advantage of lower prices that will be on the market when that would occur. So your alternative is the governing body may approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with KMEA, or the governing body may not approve the resolution and direct staff to research other energy alternatives for consideration. Staff recommends alternative one, that the governing body approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with KMEA. Now fiscal note, the total cost of this 10-year agreement would be $12,968,000, or approximately $1.3 million per year. However, the same amount of power, if we went and stayed with the market and it was only at $100 per megawatt-hour, that would cost us $26.6 million, or $2.6 million per year. So the GL code used for this is our energy is wholesale electric. The number is there. We budgeted $16,100,000 in that account. We believe that will be sufficient as we go forward. When we put that number together, we knew there'd have to be some changes in this. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I know there's a lot of numbers in there, so.
Well, I appreciate the time and detail that went into all this information. And the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, I really appreciate you hedging and strategically guarding, you know, not only the city of Garden City, but also all the customers. Because this, you know, energy is something that we all have to have, and this was excellent work and excellent read, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2969-2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution of intent to create a redevelopment district, approve a redevelopment plan, and set a new, and set a public hearing for December 6th, 2022, for the Woodmont Company Doing Businesses Garden City Plaza LLC. Danielle?
Hello. Good afternoon. On September 20th, you all authorized a memorandum of understanding with the Woodmont Company Doing Businesses Garden City Plaza LLC that outlined a number of anticipated public contributions and anticipated public costs related to this project. So you all have already authorized one portion of that, the industrial revenue bonds at that same meeting. This is kind of the next step of that process, which is to establish the public hearing for December 6th, to establish the tax increment financing district, the redevelopment plan, and kind of get that full staff presentation. So the item before you is really to set that public hearing, which would take place at your December 6th meeting at 1:30 here in this room during your regularly scheduled city commission meeting. So I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. The alternatives before you are to approve the resolution of intent to set the public hearing and consider creation of a redevelopment district and redevelopment plan, or to not approve the resolution as presented. Staff recommends alternative one, and at this point, there's no financial impact to setting the public hearing date.
What resolution number are we on?
2770. Was that it?
2970, 2022.
Yeah, sorry.
2970.
I move to reapprove Resolution number 2970-2022.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
This seems so far away, but when you said it, I just.
I note that Commissioner Ortiz is stepping down for items C and D.
Oh.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance regarding the city's taxable general obligation bonds, Series A 2022. And if approved, this would be ordinance number 2940-2022. And I'll first invite up Jared Coleman, and then we also have Brett Shogren with Stiefel here as well.
Good afternoon. At the September 6th, 2022 city commission meeting, the governing body authorized the 2022 general obligation issue for the third fire station construction, as well as the equipment and the apparatus to go with that. Today, we had our bid opening at 10:00 AM, and so here to talk about the results and the Moody rating is Brett, and he's better this than me, so I'm going to start.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Brett Shogren with Stiefel Nicholas and Company out of Wichita. As Jared indicated, we took bids today on the GO bonds to fund the third fire station project in the city. We developed a preliminary official statement and submitted it, along with your most recent audits and other financial information, to Moody's Investor Service to solicit an underlying credit rating. As always, we had a conference call with the ratings analyst with Matt and Jared. They did a wonderful job representing the city, as I always do. They came back and reaffirmed the city's outstanding AA3 credit rating on these bonds, and also your outstanding bonds that have credit ratings assigned to them. They also cited, this rating indicates the city's trend of positive financial operations and growing operating reserves, coupled with the city's monetarily-sized and growing tax base that serves as an economic center to its largely agricultural surroundings. They also noted some positives, including the city will, has indicated they will maintain healthy reserves given conservative budgeting practices. They noted a large $3.7 million surplus driven by conservative revenue projections, tight expenditure controls, and savings from vacant positions. The surplus improved the available fund balance to $14.7 million, representing a strong 51% of revenue, which rating agencies like reserves. So you're doing a great job. We applied this AA3 rating to the bonds, and we sent a bid package to a list of potential underwriters, and we also advertised a sale in the Kansas Register and in your local newspaper. This morning- This morning at 10:00 a.m., we opened the parody website. We had nine bidders signed up and received eight bids on the bonds. The bidders were Hilltop Securities, Stone X Financial Incorporated, The Baker Group, Keybank Capital Markets, Mezaro Financial Incorporated, Robert W. Barrett and Company Incorporated, Huntington Securities Incorporated, and the best bid was from FHN Financial Capital Markets in New York. FHN Financial submitted a bid on the bonds at a premium, which means basically they paid more than face value for the bonds in exchange for a higher coupon. It's pretty common in recent low-interest rate environments. In years 2023, and these are ten-year bonds, in years 2023 through 2030, they've been a five percent coupon, and in 31 and 32, they've been four percent coupons, but the yields range between three-point-two and three-point-eight-eight percent. And that generated about seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in premium. To offset those higher coupons and the higher interest cost, we reduced the size of the issue by most of that premium and only issued fifteen million nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand of the sixteen million six-hundred-and-forty-five thousand authorized. With this premium, the financing resulted in a true interest cost of three-point-seven-two-six percent, which I think is a nice result in a difficult market. With recent inflation and the Fed increasing rates to fight that inflation, war in Ukraine, et cetera, the market's been extremely volatile. It's been difficult. Garden City and its credit have always been well-respected with our bidders in this marketplace, and I think it shows in these results and the amount of bids that we received. There are three actions for consideration today. The first is to accept the best bid from FHN Financial at a true interest cost of three-point-seven-two-two-five-one-seven percent. After that would be passage of the bond ordinance, and then third would be adoption of the bond resolution. These documents have been drafted by your bond counsel, Mary Carson at Triple Oak and Garrettson, and they've been updated with the results of the sale this morning. And this puts things in motion to actually issue the bonds and set them up for closing. With acceptance of the winning bid and approval of the bond resolution and bond ordinance, we'll order the bonds printed, we'll submit the transcript to the Attorney General's office for approval, and this issue is scheduled to close on November 22nd. I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Brett, I have a question. Items C and D relate to this issuance. The first one's the ordinance, the second one, item D, is the resolution. Those are in the correct order. Based on your comments, an action that needs to precede both of those is an action to formally acknowledge that FHN Financial Capital Markets is the best bid? Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. That's the advice of Mayor Carson.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the low bid of FHN Financial Capital Markets.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
And now back to the ordinance, which if approved would be twenty-nine forty dash twenty-two.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve ordinance twenty-nine forty dash twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Then item D is the described resolution, which if approved would be twenty-nine seventy-one dash twenty-two.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-nine seventy-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure working with the city.
The rates turned out, I was, that's really.
That's impressive.
You did a great job.
Thank you very much. It's, like I said, it's been difficult. The market's been very volatile, but like I said, the marketplace has great respect for Garden City. We see more bids for Garden City than a lot of other places, and I think that's an indication of how the city's progressive and how the city's run.
Now, you put us in the best light, Jared. You know, congratulations to you to really, all of these things make a difference, because that's a three-point-seven-two-five-one-seven percent is a absolutely incredible rate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and nice seeing you again.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Jared. Mayor and Commissioners, item E, and then the subsequent sixteen or so items are all either environmental nuisance resolutions or motor vehicle nuisance resolutions. We will go ahead and read through, as we customarily have, item E, which if approved would be twenty-nine seventy-two dash twenty-two, explaining the processes, the efforts taken to contact property owners, et cetera. This one specifically would abate car parts, tires, pallets, wood, and branches from 101 North Third Street. The following items, I will simply, the processes are the same. I will simply read the resolution number if approved, the address, and the abated amount. And we will leave the staff presentation to that. Now, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to one of these items, I would just ask that you raise your hand or stand in an effort that the mayor can recognize that this is the item that you would like to speak to, and we will stop and slow down. But assuming there's nobody here wishing to speak on any of those items, we will proceed through a little more swiftly than we have in the past.
Thanks, Matt.
Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property within the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 101 North Third Street has environmental nuisance conditions on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There are car parts, tires, pallets, wood, and branches located on the property. Staff has visited the property on many occasions and has been unable to reach the residence and/or owners. The property owner and the residence have been notified by two letters sent September fourteenth, 2022, and September twenty-seventh, 2022. According to Section 38-137 of the Environmental Code of the ordinances, they have neither abated the nuisance or requested a public hearing before their governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on the property. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one, approve the attached resolution.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-two dash twenty-two.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Just one moment. Item F would be Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-three and abate conditions at 606 West Fulton.
Move that we approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-three dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item G, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine seventy-four dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 302 North Thirteenth.
Move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-four dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item H, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine seventy-five dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 307 West Albert.
Make the motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-five dash zero, dash two-zero-two-two.
Sorry. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item I, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine seventy-six dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 704 Safford Avenue.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-six dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item J, if approved, would be Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-seven dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 505 North Ninth.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-seven dash twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item K, if approved, would be Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-eight dash twenty-two and, if approved, would abate conditions at 619 North Eleventh.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-eight dash twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item L, if approved, would be Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-nine dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 1406 St. John.
I'll go ahead.
I move to make the motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine seventy-nine dash twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item M, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine eighty dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 202 Spencer Street.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item N, if approved, would be Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-one dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 205 North Thirteenth.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item O, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine eighty-two dash twenty-two and remove conditions at 704 Safford Avenue.
Make the motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-two dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item P, if approved, would be Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-three dash twenty-two and remove conditions at 304 North Thirteenth.
I move that we approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-three dash twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item Q, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine eighty-four dash twenty-two and remove conditions at 302 North Thirteenth.
Move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-four dash twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item R, if approved, would be Resolution twenty-nine eighty-five dash twenty-two and abate conditions at 318 North Twelfth Street.
Make the motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-five dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question on that one. Is, just kind of looking at that photo, is that an unregistered and operable vehicle? It just looks like it's parked, or is it parked illegally on an unimproved surface? Just asking, because when I was going through these, I saw that, and it's like, just, it just looks like it's parked there, like a person parked a car, and, just asking.
Yes, it's an untagged vehicle. Their tags are expired.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
All right. And I believe they already did a motion and a second, so we just need a vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Item S, if approved, would be twenty-nine eighty-six dash twenty-two and abates a condition at 906 Safford.
Move to approve Resolution Number twenty-nine eighty-six dash twenty-two.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Under new business, item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an electric utility rate implementation plan and to direct staff to prepare an ordinance reflecting the plan for adoption at a subsequent meeting. Mike?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. In May of 2022, Sawville and Associates, excuse me, was retained to perform a full cost of service study regarding retail electric rates for the city of Garden City. The purpose of the study was to project revenues and expenses over the five years from 2023 through 2027, based on our current rate structure, and make recommendations necessary to increase the electric fund cash balance from its current four-point-five-million-dollar level to twelve-point-five million. The cost of service was also intended to look at equity between rate classes. Preliminary findings of the study were presented to the commission at the August sixteenth pre-meeting workshop. The preliminary findings presented suggested the need for a four-point-eight percent increase in energy charges across all rate classifications. However, this did not incorporate expenses related to the negotiated settlement between the city of Garden City and Wheaton Electric Cooperative. Those costs have been subsequently incorporated into the final report. Discussions at the pre-meeting workshop indicated that the commission agreed to the twelve-point-five-million-dollar target cash balance by 2027, and would prefer a stair-step approach to rate increase implementation, and were open to considering options that divided the share of the rate increases between the fixed-rate-based charges in each classification and the use charges, which is the kilowatt-hours, in each classification. There was some discussion about a restructure of the existing rate categories. Currently, we have residential, small commercial, large commercial, church, and school, but ultimately, there was no consensus, there was consensus to leave the categories as designated at the present time. The final Sawville Cost of Service makes the following recommendations. Number one, implement revenue increase to result in electric fund balance by twelve million five-hundred thousand by the end of 2027. Number two was increase electric rates nine percent in 2023, excluding special contract customers, or this increase could be spread over multiple years. An alternative rate plan would be to increase revenues four-point-eight percent in 2023, and then increase three-point-seven-five percent in each of the years of 2025 and 2026. Number three was after approving a revenue increase plan, implement electric rates that moves towards recovering the cost to serve each power rate. And then their final recommendation was establish and implement a power cost adjustment mechanism that will recover changes in the power supply costs. Based upon the findings of the Sawville Cost of Service study, the pre-meeting workshop feedback regarding implementation strategies over time, rate classes, and base rates, energy costs, staff recommends that the city commission consider directing staff to draft an ordinance that implements a kilowatt-hour increase of four-point-eight percent effective January one, 2023, and an additional two-point-five percent increase effective on January one, 2024, January one, 2025, and January one, 2026. This would accomplish the same cash balance goal by the end of 2027, but adds a 2024 increase that lowers the 25, 2025, and the 2026 increases. Lot of numbers. So as far as the portion of the rate structure, staff recommends, also recommends, a one-time increase of the monthly customer charge on January one, 2023, of three dollars from nineteen-fifty to twenty-two fifty to the residential rate, five dollars from existing forty dollars to forty-five dollars for small commercial rate, and five dollars from the existing eighty dollars to eighty-five dollars for the large commercial rate. If the kilowatt-hour charges and the monthly customer charges described above were implemented, the average residential customer using seven-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt-hours per month would see an increase of seven dollars and thirty-two cents in 2023, and an additional two dollars and thirty-five percent, third, excuse me, an additional two dollars and thirty-five cents increase in the years 2024, 2025, and 2026, for a total of fourteen dollars and thirty-nine cents increase per month at the end of the four-year period. Should the governing body choose to direct staff to implement changes in the electric rates charged to the Garden City electric customers, an ordinance making those changes would be brought to the governing body for consideration at its November fifteenth, 2022 regular scheduled meeting. So the alternative one would be that the governing body may direct staff to prepare an ordinance recommending a kilowatt increase of four-point-eight percent effective January one, 2023, an additional two-point-five percent increase effective on January one, 2024, January one, 2025, January one, 2026, as well as an increase to the monthly customer charge of three dollars for the residential rate class, increase the monthly customer charge by five dollars for both the small commercial rate class and the large commercial rate class. Alternative number two, the governing body may direct staff to prepare an ordinance recommending a kilowatt-hour charge increase of nine percent effective January one, 2023, as well as increase the monthly customer charge by as well as increase the monthly customer charge by $3 for the residential rate class, increase the monthly charge by $5 for both the small commercial rate class and the large commercial rate class. Alternative three, the governing body may direct staff to prepare implementation of an increase of any combination of the kilowatt-hours and the monthly customer charges. Alternative four, the governing body may direct staff to provide additional analysis and options which would generate sufficient revenue to achieve a targeted electric cash fund balance. And number five, alternative would be the governing body may direct staff not to make any adjustments to their retail electric rates. Recommendation is that the staff recommends alternative one, directing staff to prepare an ordinance charging... Changing the electric utility kilowatt-hour charge across all classes by 4.8% effective January 1, 2023, an additional 2.5% increase effective on January 1, 2024, January 1, 2025 and January 1, 2026, as well as increase the monthly customer charge by $3 for the residential rate class, increase the monthly customer charge by $5 for both the small commercial rate class and the large commercial rate class. The fiscal note is that should the governing body choose alternative one or two, it is projected that the electric fund balance would reach the $12.5 million goal in 2027. Should the governing body choose a different rate adjustment alternative, then staff would provide a projected fund balance at the November 15th, 2022 meeting. And should the governing body choose not to adjust rates at this time, then the remaining fund balance would continue to decline in the electric utility. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot of numbers in there. The... I will... We'll quickly just say that the minimum fund baseline guidelines, this would create 45 days of operation and maintenance and one month of power cost, one month of debt service, two years of capital expenditures, an emergency fund of $1 million. And that would result in the fund balance of $12.5 million. And there again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, Mike and I, I mean, I... When you presented this earlier on at the meeting, I know that we had some discussion. And curious about, was it the five years? Was the five years the optimum time that recommended by the study or was... Or is that what we chose? I can't remember. I was thinking back and looking at my notes, but I couldn't find.
Yeah, the five-year study was recommended by Sawville and Associates to look at the five following years, looking at the past. And then what we recommend, we'll probably come back next year and recommend that we look at this every year for the next five years just to make sure that we're on track of where we're supposed to be. But that's where the recommendation came from, was from the Sawville and Associates. With conversation with staff, we felt that a five-year period and based upon the information we got from the commission at the pre-meeting is that, you know, kind of if we can spread this out over time, it's a little easier to... To impact that.
Yeah, I thought... I thought we discussed seven years too, but I couldn't remember. I mean, I couldn't find in my notes either, so...
I'll make a motion, will you? For... To approve alternative one. Instead of reading all the numbers again, I'll just... I'll say we'll approve alternative one.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for your work.
And note Commissioner Ortiz is stepping down for item B.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a notice of public hearing for issuance of industrial revenue bonds and granting an ad valorem tax abatement. And this is for Providence Ethical Investments LLC.
Good afternoon.
Daniel?
Mayor Commissioners. The item before you is another public hearing item. At your meeting back in February 1st of 2022, the city commission authorized a resolution of intent to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds in an approximate principal amount of $2.5 million for the purpose of purchasing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing and equipping a medical office building located at 2301 East Mary Street. And this is related to the Providence Ethical Investments LLC. The company has submitted their required information for this process to continue, which would include an exemption on sales tax for qualifying expenses related to the project and consideration of a partial ad valorem property tax abatement in accordance with the city and county tax abatement policy. Back in early 2022, Finney County Economic Development Corporation facilitated a preparation of a cost benefit analysis and formal review by the tax abatement committee. Based on that, the level of capital investment and number of jobs created, the project qualified for consideration of a 20% partial ad valorem property tax abatement. The tax abatement committee comprised of elected and staff representatives from Finney County, city of Garden City, Garden City Community College, USD 457, and they all unanimously recommended approval. And the information from that meeting is included in your packet, along with a... Along with a memo. So the item before you is to approve the notice of public hearing, which would take place at your November 15th regularly scheduled meeting, at which point that tax abatement resolution would be considered. So the alternatives before you this afternoon are to, one, authorize publication of the public hearing. Alternative two is to not authorize that publication. Staff recommends alternative one. And again, there's no fiscal impact related to authorizing that... That public hearing.
And while the attachment indicates a 1:00 PM public hearing, we would adjust that to 1:30. In this... So if they're setting the time and place, we're actually asking you to set 1:30 PM. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I move that we authorize the publication of the public hearing.
I'll second the motion that it'll be... The public hearing will be at 1:30.
Correct. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve publishing a notice of budget hearing for the... For amending the 2022 budget to reflect actual 2022 expenditures. The proposed date and time of the hearing is December 6th at 1:45 PM.
Hello again. Throughout each year, city staff compares actual and estimated expenditures to what we have authorized in our budget. Due to changes in programs, cash carryover and additional revenues, there's a need to amend the authorized budget. This happens every year due to us budgeting 18 months in advance. So the identified funds that need to be adjusted for the 2022 year are the Capital Improvement Reserve, the opioid settlements fund, which is a new fund we've created, since that's something that started this year, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Fennup Trust, Community Development, Project Safe Neighborhood and GOLF. A lot of those had additional revenues come in, which then justify additional expenditures or just a shifting of what we thought anticipated would happen. And again, the opioid settlements was something we had to put in there because we had nothing on the books for it already. And so today before you is request to authorize the publication of a notice of budget hearing for these amendments, making the... Making them known in advance of the meeting to the public so that they may be informed and have an opportunity to come speak to the city commission on the matter prior to considering adopting the amendments. So alternative number one is to approve the publication of the notice of budget hearing for amending the 2022 budget, setting the time and date of the hearing for 1:45 PM on December 6, 2022. Alternative two would be to not approve the publication of the notice of budget hearing and provide further direction to staff. And staff recommends alternative one, and there's no fiscal note for this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I move to approve publication of the notice of budget hearing for amending the 2022 budget, setting the time and date of the hearing for 1:45 PM, December 6, 2022.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for annexation of property in Section 3, Township 24, Range 32, lying north of Kansas Highway 156 and east of Jenny Barker Road into the city of Garden City, Kansas. Mike?
Good afternoon again. Staff received a letter from Timothy Hannigan of Lucky Four Investments LLC. The letter was dated October 26, 2022, requesting consideration for the annexation of property located on North Jenny Barker Road. The property is contiguous to the current city boundaries and it contains approximately 115 acres. Should the city... Um, excuse me, should the governing body authorize the annexation request, then staff would have the city attorney's office prepare the necessary ordinance and bring it back to the city commission for consideration at its November 15th, 2022 regular scheduled meeting. Your alternatives would be to direct staff to prepare the annexation ordinance and return it to the governing body on November 15th for consideration or deny the request. Staff has no recommendation and there's no financial impact to the Garden City whether you deny or approve this particular request. And I believe there's a map attached to the drawing in case you were wanting to... Where that's just... Just north on Jenny Barker Road, the highlighted area in blue. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have any problem with the annexation? I'm just curious about what... How this benefits, I mean, the property owner? Is it so they can get city sewer and water or is that already there or?
In their request, they did request annexation of the property. We further request to receive all city utilities, water, wastewater, electric and solid waste. And that's all that was really put in their letter.
And then we won't owe anybody any... Any money for annexing this?
No, if... No, we would not. And if you would choose to move forward with this, then when we bring everything back at the next meeting, I can have more details associated with that, if that's what you're asking. Okay, sure.
I'll make a motion, we approve the... To prepare the annexation ordinance and return it to the governing body for consideration at our November 15th meeting.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E is a request for an executive session. We don't anticipate that there would be any action taken following that executive session. So if the commission would like to take up the consent agenda item next and then go to commissioner reports, we can conclude with the executive session. Assuming that's alright. The next item would be the consent agenda, items F1 through 3.
I'll make a motion, we approve consent agenda items F1 through 3.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Okay, so we'll do the commissioner reports and then we'll go to do the executive session. So Commissioner Roshesna?
Yeah, I attended the State of the City address at the last chamber breakfast. Really great to see how our community continues to grow. Nice, nice presentation. It was well... Well put together. Congratulations to Kent Portof for his recognition. If I could request, a little out of the ordinary, but if he could come forward and we could get a photo with the five commissioners. I know we had a huge crowd from the electric department, but if we could get the commissioners together and city manager.
Yeah?
With Ken?
Yep.
Nice request.
That's great.
Alright, next slide was on three. One, two, three. It's been really slow today. I assume it's good because I got like five of them.
Just two more items. I saw the final beam going up on phase one of the terminal out at the airport. That's really looking good and everybody's really getting excited about that. And the great news about the larger airplane coming into the airport. So had a lot of people excited about that. And then my last item is, remember that early voting is going on right now. And next Tuesday is election day and that the election runs from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the evening. So please remember to go out and vote. That has a lot of ramifications, not only we do have people running locally, but state and also international offices. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
I did too attend the State of the Address by the mayor. That was... It was great, great information. That's all I'm gonna say. It was great. But also, we did go to Liberal, to the Kansas League of Municipalities and the dinner there. Really good discussion there, just to kind of fill in with what's happening in the state, not only with Garden City, but some of those things do affect our area as well. So just kind of look out for those as you're... As you're voting, kind of read carefully, but I think most of it is fairly well. I did also appreciate the letters from Florence Wilson the two weeks ago. I finished mine up today and sent it back, but hopefully I... I answered all the questions that those kids had. So it was... It was really fun reading. It was really great to see that those teachers are pushing those kids to kind of accelerate and get out of the classroom a little more to... To, you know, experience those governing bodies and things. So appreciated the... Also, the kids that were here today too and their leadership roles. They've... It's great to get into the community and just find out what's happening. I know I always say it, but Garden City's growing. Lots of things going on, so dirt's being moved. There's been projects that's been approved, so we are heading in the right direction with that. We just need to figure out and... And find solutions for housing, find solutions for daycare and things like that. I would like to maybe get with the mayor and probably just find out what... What a solution is so that we can get that resolved and... And figure out what we need to do to move that along. So appreciate everybody that was here this morning or this afternoon for all of that. And Brock Kendrick for reading the letter. He did put a pretty good letter together. He also was one of the members who... Farmers who went out and helped with the brush fire east of town and was riding one of the disc tractors to kind of help put that fire out. So thanks him... Thanks to him for that and all of the other farmers for helping out on that fire too, so.
Alright, Commissioner Euler?
Yeah, I'm... The wildfire, that was a scary event, especially because the wind was, I mean, just... It was just horrible that day. And so, yeah, thanks to the fire department and all of the volunteer fire departments there in the region that definitely helped with that to contain that in a pretty decent amount of time, which, I mean, I'm just always... It's always nerve-wracking when you hear the wind and then when you hear that there's a fire and then you know what the potential is. And so, thank you for all of them who risked their life on our behalf. Also, enjoyed attending the League Dinner in Liberal. It's nice to be able to get together with, as Commissioner Ortiz said, you know, with our counterparts in different cities, but then also, you know, to see the state legislators show up and be able to help explain what they see that could be coming up. And so it just is nice to have that camaraderie and then to be able to go there and represent Garden City. I drove down A Street and I want to thank the Parks Department for finishing the planting. I mean, it looks great. It looked pretty good before, but having the trees and everything else there, it really does look nice. So thanks to the Parks Department. And also, it was pretty impressive to see the crowd that we had at Public Comment. I mean, that's what... That's what we're here for. I mean, we're here to hear that every single meeting. I mean, you have 30 minutes and today we used, I think, 22 minutes of that, which was phenomenal to have, not just on one topic, but on multiple topics. And so, thank you to all of those who came. I know it can be a little disconcerting to get up to not thank you for, you know, to get up in front of the commission and in front of everybody who's in the room, but it really does help us understand what your thoughts are. And so, thank you for doing that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrew?
So, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Brock Kendrick. I know that he is a representative, but there were many parents who stand behind him and also staff members. And, you know, seeing, you know, dragging children anywhere, I remember those days, is... You know, it's a lot of work, but it really made an impact to show that, you know, no, the children are in our future. They are our future, right? I mean, they are really part of who we are now and in our future. And Jen, I've heard lots of really good work about you or lots of really... That you're doing really good work. I'd never seen or met you, so having you speak really made a difference, I think. I really appreciate your positive upbeat attitude that, you know, we do have local solutions and we do have things that we can do. That, it was pretty heavy at first and then so you coming up and saying, hey, let's really... We are working together and thank you for stepping out and working with them. It's something that's really needed. I know that there have been significant dollars spent at other daycare facilities and the Turning Point Church received quite a large allotment and, you know, their daycare is up and running. But again, it doesn't... It can only serve so many kids. So it, you know, we know it's not enough. So I'm excited about the Third Street Center. Boy, I thought Kent was gonna leave and we... We were gonna say some really nice... Boy, I thought Kent was going to leave, and we were going to say some really nice stuff about him. And I thought, no, you know, he'll have to watch it on video. You know, this is a, you know, it's really great that we can honor you, but when other people outside the community and statewide honor you, that just speaks to the work that you're doing. And the way that you've built bridges across the state and the things that you have done for Garden City, you know, we are forever in your debt. And I just wanted to say thank you, and it was really great having your wife here. And of course, having her, you know, I mean, it's nice to see her, see how you've been honored, the work that you do. Because I know there's a lot of hours you spend, and most of us have no idea. Now, I was impressed, eight months, when it takes 48 months. That I never expected, so congratulations. I just want to say thank you for the KDOT award. You know, you, 88 applications, when you was an application, you're up against 88 applications, and you're 1 of 14. $1.5 million is an incredible amount of dollars to really appoint our community. And that is for trails and sidewalks is incredible. It's something that we've been waiting for, for, well, I have since 2020. So I was really excited to see that. I couldn't remember the project it was for, and so I had to reach out and ask. But when it was trails and sidewalks, that's absolutely incredible. I just wanted to say thank you again for the cleanup. I know it's a lot of work, but it's much appreciated to have people all the time stop and say, please don't keep doing that. And I did, I was up walking and running the cemetery this week. The roads, if you've not been up there, now if you were up there before, the roads were, you know, they were okay. But the roads are, I mean, they are so nice and smooth and incredible. So the money that was spent to buy that machine that did the roads is incredible. I just wanted to say thank you for those. And also, I drove by the mural, and then I was, I drove by the arch, hoping the arch was up, but the mural is looking just incredible on the immusible building. So I just want to thank you for all the work that the city and a lot of people are doing around Garden City, and thank you for making this a wonderful place to live.
All right. Similarly, congratulate Kent on all he's done for the city and the continual growth that he brings personally and professionally and organizationally. Great award and really is deserved, so congratulations again, Kent. And like others have said, thanks Brock and everybody who came up and talked at Public Comment, especially when you have something that's this touching to yourself and so affecting. It's good to see people come and talk about issues that maybe we can affect directly, maybe we can be a support role in as a city. But it's good to have people come up and tell us about the issues that they have in their day-to-day life and look and help to have the city and, like he says, the county and the school district partner to try to come up with the solution. So thank you very much for coming up and talking there. And like Commissioner Andrew said, great award for the KDOT trails on the east side of town. That's really going to connect a lot of things together. That's really nice. And I was going to talk about stuff later on, but I'll just do it now. I went trick-or-treating last night in two different developments. One that had sidewalks almost completely around unless the houses weren't built yet, and one that's an older part of town. And let me tell you that the ability, when we had a couple of strollers with us too, to push kids around, the ability to get around a neighborhood is so dependent on if you have sidewalks or not. So thank you for everybody who puts their own money into putting in sidewalks or renovating the sidewalks. Thanks for KDOT for supporting efforts like that, because it really does make a difference between a neighborhood where you're stuck in your home and then you use your car, or you can do things in your neighborhood, especially for people that have mobility issues or kids or stuff like that. So those sorts of things, sidewalks, are very important to building a good functional community. Like others have said, good work by the fire department and the volunteers, and then the community with the fire on the east side of town. Like I said, that is a very, was a very scary situation. And glad that not just our professionals, but other people came and stepped in and really put that down where it could have been a very serious situation. And then finally, like Commissioner Sessna said, remember, next Tuesday, vote. Very important. The most important thing you can do as a citizen of the United States is to vote. Please make sure you take time to go do that. So with that, I'm done, and we can move on to item, whatever item that was.
Yeah, 12E. This would be an executive session under the exemption for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. I would ask that, in addition to the commission, that the city attorney, myself, Mike Muirhead, and Danielle Burke be included in that executive session.
How long do you think?
Oh, I'm sorry.
15?
I can try it. Yeah. I would move to request that the governing body consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, including city attorney Jennifer Cunningham, Matt Allen, Mike Muirhead, and Danielle Burke for about 15 minutes, starting at 2:36.
Sounds good.
And for the specific purpose of property related to development.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. We'll go into executive session.